Stand for the right, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the Constitution of the Republic of Canada, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is a special meeting that we have. It's a workshop to consider the recommendations put forward in the assessment report that we had done. There'll be no other subjects. There will be public comment. What we're going to do is have Mr. McDonald make a presentation, then each board member will have a chance to ask questions or make comments, and then we'll open the floor up for public comment. So Allison, our system is good right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're still testing abbreviated minutes system, so if you feel a need to make sure that all of your comments are recorded when you speak, please indicate that after you give your name and your address. So with that, Mike, will you introduce our consultant?
Stephen. Stephen McDonald, if you would. Why don't you tell them who you are and kind of tell them where Mr. Beich is today as well.
Steve, before you get done, just let me emphasize to the board that we'll be listening to your entire presentation and then open it up for board comments, so.
Stephen, you have to get that mic pretty close to you.
Thank you.
You can take it out if you need to.
Thank you, Mike. Is that good?
Yep.
Before I do get started, I did want to thank the district staff, who has been very supportive in this assessment study. It makes our job so much more easy to do these types of analyses and this type of work when you have such a competent and dedicated staff, so really thank them for all of their efforts. We'll also thank the district for your continued confidence in our work. We've actually known Mike for quite some time, so his continued confidence in RARC and GAI to do this type of work is, we very much appreciate it. Just a quick intro to RARC and GAI. When we met, you met Owen Beich and myself earlier. Owen is Senior Director of RARC. RARC is a GAI company, and it specializes in economics and public finance. Owen couldn't be here today because his wife is having surgery, so it's one of those life events that while he wanted to be here, he's poured a lot of work and effort into this assessment study, and he's very knowledgeable about this assessment study, but he sends his apologies for not being able to be here. Hopefully, I'll be able to answer all of your questions. GAI, and you'll hear me refer to that because Owen is a RARC, a principal of RARC. I'm actually the senior economist for GAI. I just started getting gray hair, but I've been doing this for 20 years. It was only after I got gray hair that people started taking me seriously, but I have been doing this type of work in Florida for a little bit more than 20 years. Tanya, if I could have the next slide? Just to go, you know, a purpose of our assessment review, we had a very specific scope that we were asked to do. It involved reviewing your existing methodology, making recommendations or modifications, and I should say if any, because one of the results of our review and analysis could have been, "Don't change." But really, the ultimate goal is to continue to provide you with the financial sufficiency in order to deliver the revenue and the operating needs of the district. In terms of special assessments, I know you're all aware, but just for the audience, but to remind ourselves, special assessments are different than taxes. They're a dedicated revenue source available to improvement districts, to special districts, and even to other local governments in Florida. In order to have a valid assessment, there's essentially two important components. The property that's being assessed must receive special benefit from improvements. And probably more importantly, it's easy to identify you either are or are not, maybe I shouldn't say that. Maybe it might be debatable in some cases that you're receiving special benefits, but I'm talking in terms of being in a district. You're either in that district or you're not in that district. So it's probably pretty easy to identify properties that receive special benefits from improvements, but the most important second tier is that the assessment must be fairly and reasonably apportioned. And that's an important concept, because I will tell you, there is no formula. While the legislature makes this dedicated revenue source available to you, it does not provide you a specific formula, does not provide a specific method, it does not provide a specific calculation. It just indicates, and Florida law upholds assessments by saying they simply must be fairly and reasonably apportioned. So the key there, as long as your methodology is fair and reasonable, and you're not being arbitrary and capricious, there may be other ways of doing it, but it is a reasonable and would be a lawful assessment. If you can go to the next slide, Tanya. And I'm going to give you a water and sewer analogy to kind of maybe help solidify this in your minds, because sometimes when you talk special assessments, it's hard to grasp what that special benefit is, and then how do you translate that into an allocation? But if you think about water and sewer, you have a water hookup, you use water in your daily lives, you have sewer, sometimes you have sewer, sometimes you don't, but you use it in your daily lives. Water and sewer, again, is not, there's not a single way of apportioning the cost of water and sewer. You must be fair and equitable, but no two systems actually charge water and sewer the same way in the entire state of Florida. Maybe a lot of similarities, there's some common rates, but no two systems are alike in the way they try to apportion that cost of that service. Not only that, if you think about your base charge, it's common that your base charge is calculated and allocated based on the size of your meter. And the size of the meter just says, "I've reserved some capacity for you," but it has nothing to do with your use. You can have a commercial customer with a two-inch meter that uses a tenth of the capacity just based on what it is, but it's still being charged for 100% of that capacity. Your minimum sewer charge, some utilities, because meters, sewer is not metered, it's assumed to be water in, water out, they may have a minimum usage on sewer, and that's your charge. You may not use that amount. You may use more than that amount. And as I mentioned, water is simply based on water in, water out. Or you may, as a utility, decide, "I want to implement a lifeline rate." So regardless of what my cost of service is, for my first 2,000 gallons, I don't want a single-person household, or an elderly person household, or a low-income person household to be burdened by that, so I'm going to charge them less regardless of their cost of service. And lastly, if anybody's ever been in the manufacturing business, you understand, the more you produce, the less your cost is, actually, your marginal cost decreases significantly. But we implement inclining block rates across the state because we decide it's beneficial to conserve water. So my point here is, as long as you're fair and equitable, in any one of these cases, as long as it's fair and equitably applied, that is still a fair and equitable rate regardless of you as an individual, what you may or may not use of that system. Can I have the next slide? So in terms of the special benefits that we've identified for Sun and Lake, and again, it's a package of benefits. Unlike my water and sewer analogy, it was just water where it was sewer. You can have assessments that are just singularly focused. Might be fire, might be something else. But in terms of the benefits in Sun and Lake, they have a lot to do with being a member of the Sun and Lake community. It's an overall character of the community, it involves the near-term and the long-term stability of those community improvements. They're maintained over time. There's educational features, there's commercial advantages, and there's underlying value of being part of a master plan community. There's enjoyment of property, and basically the protection of that value therein. There's obviously management and expertise, and there's the value enhancements that are key to both unimproved and improved property. In a lot of cases, if you take any property outside of Sun and Lake, if you remove it, if you could remove property, if you could pick it up and move it, which you can't, but if you could, that underlying value of that property is not the same as it is in a master plan community like Sun and Lake. So in terms of our proposed special assessment methodology, we basically, after we've reviewed the existing methodology, after we've had discussions with staff, after we've had discussions with yourselves, and after we've listened to sometimes questions, so listening to a question, not just answering, is important, but a lot of times, listening to comments, we've come up with essentially two key components of our proposed methodology. And that first component is defining a standard for assigning benefit. In this case, it is an equivalent land unit. It is essentially taking the property, those properties within Sun and Lake that received that special benefit, and assigning it an equivalency such that all properties can be compared to each other on a relative basis. And the ELU standard, the equivalent land unit standard, is .258 acres, which is essentially derived as the basis of your single-family lots. It's an average of all of the improved single-family lots within Sun and Lake, so it represents in essence that standard. All properties that are less than the .258 equate to one unit, so it's essentially a standard unit, and then all properties above that are simply divided by that base to calculate what their equivalent ELUs are. So if you have, just to make the math simple, if you have half an acre, it is going to be roughly equal to two ELUs. If you have something that's at that .258, it's one ELU. Anything less than the .258, still one ELU. So it is simply your individual property size divided by that standard equals your ELU. The other key component is essentially layering of those assessments. We identified really two tiers of property. The first tier is all properties share in the cost essentially to administer the district, and it's identified within your budget, within your cost, as admin and finance. So all properties, based on their ELU, would share in that cost component of the district. This tier two, only certain properties share in the certain costs to operate and maintain the district. And so they are reduced set, and it's predominantly those properties that have improved road, improved drainage, and more importantly, the highest access to all of the improvements and maintenance that goes on within the district. So that tier two is simply the remaining costs of the district, excluding your finance and your admin, shared among all of those ELUs, representing only those certain properties. And at that point, that was just really a brief summary of the assessment. You have the assessment report in front of you. I would be willing, and I'm here to take any questions you might have.
Okay, let's start with Supervisor McCullough.
Oh, I love that. Okay. I guess the first question I have is, you based this study on three and a half million. That's how much revenue that we collect, but that's not how much revenue we should collect. So to me, you know, this is skewed to actually lose money, because we should collect five and a half million, and we only collect, so that 40% that we don't collect will come out of the three and a half million, so now we're down to two million that we're going to collect instead of three and a half.
And that's probably our fault for not clarifying that, that that's not entirely the case. We have not, we have not made any changes in terms of the financial need of the assessments. These assessments as proposed are based on the same financial need as the existing assessments. There's a difference between the assessments sent to properties and what you collect and therefore have as an available operating revenue source. We have not reduced the amount of assessments from your current system, so your financial need under the existing system and this system is exactly the same. Your ability to collect more than the 3.5, you will collect more than 3.5 because it is being made available whether or not you can solve those collection issues.
I don't agree with that, but anyway. On this one sheet here that you passed out, I guess there's a couple of things that I don't understand. You got unimproved lots with road and drainage, golf front, is going from 560 to 618. I assume that is a lot that doesn't have a house on it, a resident on it. And then on the first line, you got improved lots, golf front goes from 734 down to 576. So a resident that is living on the lot would pay 576. A lot owner with no house would pay 618. So he's going to pay more money on a vacant lot than he would on a lot with a house, and that doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah, that's averaging, and I think we discussed that in length the last time we met. Here's what's going to happen, okay? The better thing to look at is simply on page seven of your assessment study, okay? If you are in tier one, which is everybody, you are going to have an assessment allocated at $97.84. Every single parcel in the district is going to pay that fee, $97.84. If every lot was of identical size, which not every lot is, if every lot was of identical size, then only those lots that are really receiving the direct benefits of district maintenance and improvements, which is all of those lots that have improved road, improved drainage, they would pay an additional $37.46, $376.46, okay? So every lot that would of the same exact size would pay your 470, 430. What you're looking at, and what gets distorted, is you have how many golf front lots?
Eight hundred.
You probably have 700 different sizes of lots. So someone who has a corner lot that is 1.5 acres is going to pay more than a corner lot with .25 acres. So what you're seeing there is the makeup of the property, not necessarily saying that that category, and again, those are your existing categories, we no longer have those categories. So that is just an artifact of what the makeup of those properties are, and because of averaging, not necessarily the difference in what we're saying they should be assessed.
I don't want to, I'm sure these guys got some other questions, but the other one that just to me stands way out of line, you got mobile home lots at $195, and you're going to bump them up to 457. I mean, that's just way out of whack as far as I'm concerned. I think mobile home lots are too low, but to take it up 134%, I think that'd be a hard sell, I think. That's just a comment. Go ahead.
Rick? Rick?
Well, I've looked this over nine ways to Sunday, and as far as I'm concerned, everything that I've read, looked at, analyzed, if it isn't broke, don't fix it. And I don't think our system's broke, and I don't think we ought to be messing around with it.
Is that it?
That's it.
Well, unlike Rick, I've looked at it off the different directions. With the figures that I've seen, I can't believe that we're going to bring in the $3.5 million that we need to do with this project. It looks to me like there's going to be a ton of them not paying, and they're not paying the $97.
Larry, you need to talk into your mic, you can't pick it up.
It looks to me like there's a lot of them that's going to be in that $97 range that we're having trouble collecting from now, but we're trying to collect a lot more money from them now. And from what I can see in the thing, it looks to me like we're going to come up way short of our $3.5 million, and therefore, we're going to be changing, not the factor in it, but we're going to be changing the amount that we have to multiply the factor by to come up with this $3.5 million.
Larry, the 3.5 is a historic figure that we have been collecting.
Right, that's exactly right. That's a figure that we have been collecting, but that's what we need to keep our budget.
You're assuming everybody's going to pay.
And that assumes everybody pays.
No, no, no.
That's based on the historic trends of who pays and who hasn't paid. If we based it on total, who pays, Tanya has what, more in the $5 million something range, isn't it, per year? We're only getting about, what, 55, 60% payment? So the 3.5 is something we've maintained as revenue flow for the last several years. We're okay from that standpoint.
To address one of Supervisor McCullough's comments, this chart right here, I was just looking at it when you were talking, it appears to me that the total assessment under the new methodology would be $5 million to $100,000 with a proposed 65% collection rate, 64.8, yielding $3,305, if they got that much, so. I think that was.
That answers the question.
Larry, anything else?
Not right this minute, no.
Maybe I've got more to say. First, I want to compliment you on the dissertation you had in here, that you described Sun and Lake very well in the verbiage, I thought. But when it comes to the formula, I had a problem before when we met earlier. The approach used is completely unacceptable. Using equivalent land units is completely contrary to providing the benefit received compared to other properties. A residential unit is a residential unit. The size of the property that that residential unit sits on, or a condo sits on, has nothing to do with the benefits provided, has nothing to do with the benefits provided. You get the same benefits, so it should be across the board the same, and I looked at some of our old studies we had. An equivalent land unit is an ad lorem method of computing taxes, not assessments. You're looking at it as, like the taxing, you mentioned taxing is saying probably a dozen times, so I think the mindset, and it was an easy way, it was an easy way for you guys to do the study, because from the database of the original plot, every unit had a land unit or acreage on it. So you just took that and run the numbers and developed the formula off of that. Assessments should be based upon benefit units, not land units. I don't see, I don't see how this thing would ever fly, and you got some, there's some big, there's some enormous spreads in here. When you were in here earlier, I talked to you about Tanglewood as a special circumstance. I think we've got contracts, and I ask you to review those contracts with Tanglewood to see where this might apply. Their assessment would go up 2.5%, 240%. We'll be in court for years trying to fight that battle. John, what do you think about that?
I render no opinion right now, so we're too early on.
You're fired.
The Tanglewood, I ask about looking at them as a separate situation, about assessing the individual owners, unit owners, a certain amount for recreational benefits, or for capital improvements, like we just put a million dollars in a system for water meters. And the Tanglewood unimproved lot assessment doesn't provide for any of that. So these things need to be looked at individually. I mean, you just can't go in and say, "This property is going to be, you're going to pay twice as much because you've got a larger lot than somebody next door." It just, it just doesn't, doesn't make sense. And this, the revenue based upon, based upon your study, if you do a roll-up of current people that are current, generates that $3.5 million, and did you do that roll-up?
Yes.
Tanya, or did, Tanya, did you do it? You did it.
Yes.
I think, I think we missed a, I think we missed a boat. It should be on benefits provided, not on land units and size of properties. Mr. Obadiah's property over here, it's paying $12,000 a year, go to $24,000 a year. You'd be in court with him, too. Tanglewood's goes from $219,000 to $538,000. I mean, we're opening up a can of worms here that we're not going to be able to close, I'm afraid, and I'm trying to be nice about it, but we, I don't know what the other supervisors had to say at the original meeting, but you had the same methodology then, you went back, laid it down, let it gather dust, when you come back, you got the same methodology. Nothing was changed, except some of the commercial properties went down more. I mean, some of these commercial properties are 10% of what they're paying today. It just doesn't make any sense.
So let me address those comments, because it didn't sound like a question, but I'll answer it. The first thing we can't do is we cannot characterize this methodology as wrong or incorrect. This methodology is an approach.
Right, it's a matter of opinion.
Absolutely, and you as a board are free and willing and able to do whatever approach you want to do. But let me address the issue of benefit unit versus land unit, and it goes back to the analogy of water and sewer capacity, okay? If I build a water and sewer system, and I build it at a certain capacity, let's assume, let's assume that it's 100% residential, okay? If I have someone taking up twice that capacity, they have displaced a unit. So similar to a master plan community, if it was 100% residential planned at .25 acres, and you have someone at half an acre lot, they have displaced a unit and by default have assumed the benefit and burden of the allocation of what it costs to provide services to that property. So it is not incorrect, it is an approach. The other thing I think we're struggling with, and again, we have to remind ourselves, I didn't address the existing methodology, okay? But you can't assume that the existing methodology is fair and equitable, you can't assume that the existing methodology doesn't create imbalances that this may resolve. So I'm going to go back to Tanglewood. If you took the entire property of Tanglewood and raised it, you just wiped it all out and replaced it with single-family homes at .25 acres, the assessment allocated to that property would be identical, the same as it is under this methodology for Tanglewood, or the same as it is with the thousand homes, whatever the number would be. So we're not treating Tanglewood differently, we're not treating commercial We're not treating commercial properties differently. We're trying to assign a relative allocation to each property, which equates to, if the benefits created to the property are relatively identical, a fair and equitable approach. But if it's not a fair and equitable approach, from your opinion, that doesn't mean it's not correct. So that's important, I think, for everybody to understand.
Yeah, well, I do, but I disagree with comparing utilities to this. I think you're selling a product there, and you, based upon how much of that product is sold, that's what you pay for, you know? And this is, this is altogether different, altogether different, in my opinion. And it's only my opinion.
But again, my analogy, you pay more than what you get in some cases in water and sewer. So...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. If, if you were to, you're using water and sewer, okay? But everybody here pays an equal share. No matter what they use, in water and sewer, they pay for what they use. So you can't say that because Sam next door used twice as much water than Pete, that he is using more of his benefit, because he's not, because he is, he is paying for the use of that water in that sewer, okay?
Yeah, that's not exactly what I said, but...
It is. What you were saying is that he was using up more of his benefit than the next-door And that's not true. In our system here, in water and sewer, everybody pays for what they use, right?
There is, there is a difference, because the bigger your water meter, the more your base charge.
Which you may not be using that capacity of the water meter. So by default, you're paying more than what you use.
But you're talking about, you were talking about home ownership, per home, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So you can't, you can't say that one house versus another house, because they use more water or sewer, is using up more than his benefit.
That's not what I said. I said the structure of rates within water and sewer can create, can create instances where someone, regardless of what they use, pays more than what they get, and someone pays less than what they get. It's an artifact of the structure of the rates, but as long as it's applied fair and equitably and not arbitrary, you can't, in water and sewer, just like assessments, say, just because that house is pink, it's ugly, I want to charge it twice. That's arbitrary and capricious. The fact is, water rate structures do create inequities within individual users, but because the approach is applied without regard to the character of that property or the individual of that property, then it is still fair and equitable.
Mobile home lots, how big are they, size-wise? I mean, what did you base this on?
That I can't, because that wasn't, that was not a factor in the calculation of the Tanglewood rate. I mean, I think we did the calculation, but...
You, .258, right?
Correct. So it's the total acreage of Tanglewood divided by .258 equals equivalent land units. So those equivalent land units times the rate.
But if there's four lots, then there is equivalent land units, and the lots are actually smaller than the 2.58.
It actually comes out to be the equivalent land units are almost identical to the number of...
Lots.
Pads and homes, and lots, yes.
Okay.
Almost identical.
I share Supervisor Halbick's comments about the report being very well-written. I think there's a lot of good stuff in there, and particularly your comments about perhaps looking at water sewer again, but basically the stuff that's related to fairness. But I have, like he does, several questions. You use the term "special assessment." Is that a correct legal term of what our system is? I always thought special assessments were more site-specific. I mean, do we have an assessment system, or do we have a special assessment system?
To me, the term is "special assessment," but I don't think that it has a specific legal term, but of course, I'm not a lawyer.
John?
I would not attribute any particular significance to that. I understand what you're saying. Clearly, if there is a unique assessment, it can be labeled as special assessment, and we call our assessments assessments, but I don't know that the way it's used here is necessarily...
Yeah, well, that threw me off a little bit, so be it. Let's talk a little bit about the services and benefits. Like my colleagues, I don't equate size to assessments. I equate benefits and services to assessments. And I think you started off in a very good context when you started talking about tier one and tier two. By the way, I think we have way too many assessment categories. I think it's self-defeating. We have, what, 27? I mean, that's ridiculous. You had no comment on that. There was no suggestion to simplify.
But we are, we actually, that's a great point, and I missed that in the presentation, but we don't have categories anymore. Under the proposed methodology, you, you are tier one, which is everybody with the 97 dollars.
That's a category.
Or you're tier two.
Well, let's talk about, let's talk about those, okay?
So it's essentially just those two categories.
Tier one, if I understand it correctly, that's a service. I like service better than I like benefit, for everybody in the community, is that correct?
Correct.
And then when we get into tier two is where we start deviating. We talk about some get this and some don't get that and so forth. Your characterization of tier one and tier two, in my opinion, doesn't go nearly far enough, because you talk about golf, you talk about this and talk about that, but there's no real attempt to define what services are acquired from, say, being in tier two. You go right to size, but you don't go to what these people are getting. And if we have, if we have a house that's, well, let's take my place. You've got my place in here. According to this formula, I'm going to make out like a bandit. But I get the same services as my colleagues do in larger units.
So again, you're comparing against the old assessment, so, and it's very difficult...
Well, we have to, look, we have to have a base, and we have to have a benchmark.
No, I don't, I don't think that's true. You don't. Because this is, if you did not have the original assessment, and you asked us to come and say, what would be an appropriate method to allocate an apportion, we would still come up with this regardless. So the characterization that you're going to make out like a bandit is kind of not relevant. The question would be, do all five of you guys live on the golf course? Do all five of you live on the golf course?
No.
How many of you live on the golf course? Raise your hand. Okay, the three, four of you. So what is your assessment today? Forget about the assessment yesterday. Your proposed assessment is the same for each one of you, unless you have a different lot size.
No, that's not true.
No, it is true.
It is true. If they have the same lot size, live on the golf course, they will pay the exact same assessment.
Even if we don't...
So the question, the question you should be asking is, Commissioner Miller, next to Commissioner White, is that fair and equitable? How many of you play golf?
Well, we all play golf.
Well, okay, how many of you play golf, how many of you play golf incredibly frequently versus every once in a while? So does that change your opinion of what each of you should be paying, just because...
Golf is not relevant, because we pay a fee to be members of the golf club, so that's, that puts in a different context.
Exactly. So the individual that owns that property is not the one that receives the benefit. Whether they take advantage of the clubhouse, the community center, the golf course, all the things that are provided, the question, not against last year's assessments, the question is, if the four of you have the exact same lot size, live on the golf course, should you be paying the same exact assessment? Is that fair and equitable?
Yes.
Okay. So who doesn't live on the golf course? Okay? If she has the same lot, she's going to be paying the same as the four of you. Is that fair and equitable?
Yes.
You will be paying the same as the four of them.
You've ignored, you've ignored the surcharge.
Yes, I...
We pay an extra $62 a lot for being on the golf course.
But again, it's not part of the base benefits of living in a master planned community, which we were asked to allocate. So that's really the question we should be asking, is it fair and equitable that if you have the same lot, all four of you, all five of you, including this person, is paying the same rate, regardless of what you played last...
Let me put it another way. What you're recommending is resulting in a massive shift of payments among different elements of this community.
Correct, probably. And again, I don't want to address it specifically, you can't say that there weren't massive imbalances existing in the community.
I agree, but they're not as massive as they are with this report. This is massive.
Why don't, why don't we attempt to...
Define massive. You've got to define massive. So who, do we know what, all the lots, the lots without road and without drainage in the West, correct? What are they paying as an assessment?
894.
So $300. Barely receive any benefit, other than being a part of the Sun and Lake community, other than having the potential of, at some point, developing, other than having the potential of some point getting road drainage.
Look, I think you're being rather glib about what they receive and what they don't receive. What I'm trying to point out to you is you started down the road of tier one and tier two, but you haven't defined those services, not to our satisfaction.
So Commissioner Miller, and again, we may have missed it in the presentation, but not in the report, that difference is lots that don't have paved road and don't have drainage.
It's more than that. It's more than that.
And by location, and by location, are limited in terms of the benefit they receive from the actively maintained and operated improvements.
But not to the extent that, not to the extent that you're trying to define in this report. What I'm saying is that the characterization of the services that you're talking about is not quite correct.
But again, it's not a matter of being correct or incorrect. It is, it is a matter of being an approach, not an approach. The only thing that we've allocated to all properties is the cost to administer and take care of the finances of the district. Those are things that would have to happen whether or not anything was maintained. The balance of costs, which include community improvements, which include code enforcement, which include road maintenance, which include drainage, which include recreation, which includes golf, those are the benefits that are being allocated to the tier two. We probably missed a great opportunity in the presentation to explain that, but it is fair and equitable and reasonable.
You missed that definition, too. When you talk about security, our security patrol is out there, as well as the patrol over here.
But the...
As a district-wide service.
But it's, again, it's a de minimis benefit, and it would not add differently to the 97 dollars.
Well, now you're being subjective. You're being subjective. Recreation is a district-wide availability. Anybody out there or over there or back here can avail themselves of the recreation facilities that we have. Fees are charged, fees are for everybody, you know? So we can go on and on on this. What I'm trying to say is that I don't think we've gone far enough in those kind of definitions. What I congratulate you on is obviously you started a debate here in a forum and awareness, and you've got a lot of good stuff in here, but you're not going to get, I think, this board to suddenly say that we're going to tell somebody that their assessment is doubling because they have a big lot. I mean, that's not going to happen. So we're going to figure out, can we work with this, and to what extent can we work with this, and what changes should we be making? So I would treat it in that manner, and again, I thank you for your work in that respect. And do we have anything else before we open it up?
I guess would it make it easier to have more classification? I know we've got 20 some, but if we had maybe three or four tiers, I mean, would that make it easier?
No.
Well, I'm asking him.
Thank you. Well, ultimately, it gets to a point where you can overcomplicate something, just as much as you can oversimplify something. I think to answer Commissioner Miller's question, you could just charge per lot. Just per lot. That is a fair and equitable apportionment of assessments, and it's been used before, per lot.
Well, in reality, I live in a community, I summer in a community, it's a gated community. They have two categories. Their assessment community, same as this. Two categories, improved and unimproved. That's it. And they assess on that basis.
Perfect.
Would you call that equitable?
100 percent residential?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. That's the slam dunk.
No, it's not a slam dunk, because you can, you can apply the same definition here.
But what I'm saying is, if you wanted simplification that doesn't create an imbalance, 100 percent of a typical use to do improved, unimproved, that's a great assessment methodology. The problem we have is I, if I oversimplified it to be improved, unimproved, and I don't want to pick on anybody, but should the hospital just pay because they're one lot? So then, it's not just, it's...
Well, that's why I'm asking, if you had more tiers, like commercial and non-commercial and that kind of thing, maybe it would be more equitable, I guess.
I would say that you can come up with more categories. You are burdened with the fact than coming up with, when you create a category, of defining what is that relative benefit and translation of that relative benefit. And again, I go back to the equivalent land unit, which is, and it is an acceptable, because if the hospital's 77 acres, and I probably have that wrong, if you wiped out the hospital and replaced it with 77 acres full of single-family homes at .258 acres, that property would pay and have the burden of the same assessment as it does as a hospital use. So other than just, other than just saying one lot pays the same, this is an attempt to get at that, almost a magnification relative to other property. Because if you said, let's create a hospital category, what is the benefit then to translate its benefit relative to one home? Is it per bed? Which probably doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Is it per square foot? You then don't, it's not a matter of not wanting to introduce more categories. You introduce more complication in trying to fair and equitably assess, assess what your needs are.
Okay. Look, you've given us obviously a lot of food for thought, and it's not something that we're going to say yea or nay or anything right now, but we've got a lot more discussion to do. Let's open it up to any public comment that we may have.
I think we're opening a can of worms. If we go with another assessment here, as Kurt said when we first started off, we've got an unimproved lot that's going up to 600, or an improved lot going up to $618, which is more than what the normal residential person would pay. If we continue doing this, we're going to have other people complaining. They'll say, well, I live in a condo, and there's only, like, I live in a condo, so I have three lots there that there's 23 units in, which everybody pays the total amount of what are the assessments, same as what you pay, people pay that have your own homes. It's my own home, but it's a condo, and I pay the same amount. Keep what we have, don't change it, because it will continue on with this, and everybody will say, well, what about this, what about that? What about that?" If you're going to make changes, make small changes and do it a little bit at a time, and don't make massive changes like this. That's all I've got.
I hear you, Pat. Thank you. Anybody else?
Good afternoon. I'm Phil Amos from Florida Hospital. I have with me Rosalie Oliver. She's our CFO. Just been sitting here listening to what y'all have to say. I certainly appreciate your comments and what y'all have there.
Get closer to my...
Oh, I'm sorry. I appreciate the comments that y'all have made and the questions y'all have asked. I think that they've identified some of the issue that we are concerned with.
Excuse me, your position at the hospital is...
I'm the facility director at the hospital. Rosalie is the CFO.
Yeah, thank you.
Before we go too far, I'd just like to jot down a couple of notes here to think about the value that we provide to the community, because we do. We bring jobs. We improve our property. We pay fees for all the outside things that we bring in and use. We provide our own trash service. We do pay for water and sewer, just like everybody else, and we have that base rate then that we pay on top of that. We provide for our own security. We provide our own drainage. We have retention and detention ponds. We don't use any community services. We don't use any of the roads. We don't use code enforcement. Let me see here. Recently, the fire prevention services disappeared for us. We now are relying on the city, which is the community whole, and I understand that, but we're relying on the city. They're a little farther away, a little longer response time. And so in light of all of those issues, as we've talked about this, you know, it was mentioned, we have 77 acres of the hospital proper, which is, is a true statement. We probably occupy seven acres of that, and the rest of it is unused. It sits there. We mow it. We take care of it, but it doesn't bring any value to us. It doesn't do anything for us except to sit there. I think that this proposed plan doesn't consider the value that we bring to the, to the community as a whole. We do bring a value here. And I believe that a 43%, that's what it amounts to, 43% increase is an excessive burden to put on us at one time.
Well, let me stop you right there. Let me first say that Florida Hospital has been a valued corporate member of this community. Now, this is your first time at the meeting, but we go back a long time with Florida Hospital to Tim Cook before that, and if there's everything, anything this board does, it considers Florida Hospital as valuable member of the community. And any time that we talk about fees or anything like that, we make sure that we are completely in accord regarding your situation in the community. So maybe Eric Stevens should have been here, but trust me, you're not going to see a 43% increase, okay?
That's good. Thank you.
As you can tell from the comments on the board, a lot of chewing around to do before we, we may not make any changes, as has been suggested, but we would not do anything that would jeopardize our relationship with Florida Hospital.
We appreciate that, and, and we do understand, you know, the cost of doing business does go up, and there might be some increase, but we just, we saw the dollar amount, it just seemed to be quite large.
Yeah, that would scare me, too, but, but we do provide a few services to you. So you weren't quite, you weren't quite...
No, sir. No, sir. So we just wanted to, to voice that, and we appreciate you all.
Well, we hear you loud and clear.
Thank you very much.
Now, if you guys would just get us that EMS facility there, and we're stuck in neutral on that baby.
Hi, I'm Rick Sellers. I'm the community manager at Tanglewood. So on behalf of the owners of Tanglewood, your comments were appreciated a while ago. That is a huge, huge increase you're looking at.
Proposed, proposed.
Proposed, proposed, but you also made a comment, we would drag this thing out for many years, and you're absolutely correct on that, too. So I believe you'd be opening up a can of worms that you really don't want to challenge at that point, but it's showing 134%. Going from 195 to 457. That's, that's just huge. So anyway, so all I got to say is, we would strongly oppose this right here.
We hear you.
I think mine's rather simple.
You need to identify yourself, please.
Pardon?
Identify yourself.
Richard Beebe, 45, 26, Myrtle Beach Drive.
It's on. It's on.
Just put it up close to your mouth. Okay, I just wanted to make you aware of two different things. In July, my wife issued two checks to Sun and Lakes from two different banks, and they both come up missing. They have not been cashed. And so we put a stop payment on it, and it didn't cost anything, because it's all electronic. And that's the first time we've come up with that. The other is the credit book, the money that we receive for playing golf or, and getting a little bit of money back, or my wife keeps a spreadsheet, and it's detailed. I can make sure of that, but just about every week, we have a disagreement, and...
You mean with, with the district?
With the, with the credit book. Either we're ahead on the money or we're behind on the money, and I'm talking about strictly golf tournaments.
Well, Dick, this, this is something that you should, you should perhaps talk tomorrow at the regular meeting, because we're limited here to just a discussion on assessments, but if you can, have you talked with Dave Ford or the people over there as far as...
No, but I thought that would be the next place to go.
Well, I would do that, and if you still have a problem, give me a call.
Yeah.
Okay?
But we, we have talked to a lady there that does the bookkeeping, accounting, whatever that is, and we don't always get too far with that.
Well, we'll make sure it gets resolved, okay?
Yeah.
And if you want to, if you want to make that comment tomorrow at the regular board meeting and public comment, feel free to do so.
But I did want you to make note of the checks being missing. I don't know if anybody else is having that kind of a problem.
Well, I...
But from two different banks, we thought that was rather unusual.
This is golf.
Oh, the golf. Okay, I'll mention that.
From the golf, it's Megan.
I'll mention that myself, Dick.
Okay.
Larry Bertetto. Just on page nine, there's something that I'd like to have explained. The approach further distinguishes property by its location, by said, said location is suggestive that those benefits properly assigned to that property. In the current UBRICS, some costs are shared by all tax parcels, and others are shared only by those with obvious opportunity to occasion and to assess, access the community's services or facilities. I having a problem... Why don't we let our consultant answer that?
That's just the difference Tier One versus Tier Two. So Tier One's being those properties that are designated and identified by location. I guess, I think Mike Houston's the term lots in the woods that don't have paved road, that don't have drainage. They are included within all properties. The properties that are obviously have the opportunity to occasion and access improvements are those with approved roads, with drainage, and again, identified by location, which are really the four properties that are in the middle of developed...
Larry, that, that was some of the give and take from earlier comments between our consultant and the board, and to me, it's kind of a matter of definition, and as you heard me say, right now, in my opinion, it's not completely defined, so...
Well, that's what my, my thing was I really...
We'd have to clarify that.
Do you say, "Well, because I live in a preserve and somebody lives in Unit Two," that we're going to distinguish the...
No, those are all questions that are on the table, you know?
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Larry. Mr. Coste.
Tom Coste, resident. I would like to know, go back to the beginning of this project, and wonder if it began with a kickoff meeting with the board, and if the parameters for this study were set by, by a clear understanding between the board and your firm, or did it start with a clear understanding between your firm and district staff? Who set the stage for this study?
Well, I believe I was the one that wanted the study in the first place.
But it seems so far, far afield from, from what we have been doing and the reaction that you folks are having today, it seems as though there might have been some direction applied that's far afield from whatever you guys...
Well, Tom, look, look, this is a very highly respected firm. I'm aware of them from my days in the real world, and they were given a charge to address a situation that we thought might need addressing. And as far as taking, to where they've taken it, I mean, that's, that's their prerogative as consultants. Whether or not we agree with it is another matter.
Okay, I understand that. The other, the other comment is the fact that we've got some 40% of the lots in Sun and Lake are delinquent, and some of them delinquent for many years, and I just wonder if the fact that those lots, if we change the assessment structure, they still have to satisfy the old structure before they can even get to the new structure and begin paying on that basis? And I wonder if that was factored into your projections?
No, that was outside their scope of work, Tom. That's, that's another can of worms. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'll bring it back to the board.
That was, that was a good, I never thought about the comment he made, Tom just made about the, the old delinquent structure versus the new delinquent structure. If you would change that and reduce, reduce some of those considerably, then there would be probably issues with, with that.
It's not retroactive.
What's that?
I wouldn't think it'd be retroactive, no. I think if you owe $100, you change the rate to 50, you still owe $100 bucks.
Each tax, each year's assessment roll stands on its own.
Yeah, that's what I would say.
That's the way the state does it as well.
Okay. Guys, last, last crack at Mr. McDonald.
Well, where do we, where do we stand now? If we, if, if, if we would disagree with this method...
Well, it's up to us to take further action. I mean, it's obvious that we have a ton of questions regarding this, so they've done their job, they presented an approach, and it's up to us to digest that and decide what we want to do, and that won't happen today.
Okay. But are they still on the clock on this?
I don't think so. I think this, this completes their, their assignment. You'll be walking out the way you walked in, so that's a good thing. But yeah, it's, again, I, I thank you for, for your efforts in this half, because I read it with great interest, because it's something that I was engaged in back when I, again, when I was in the real world, and I can tell a good report from a bad report. And I'm not talking about recommendations, but I'm talking about you've given us a lot of good things in here that I think our district attorney would certainly, some of the clarifications on law and so forth, I think is, is very beneficial to us. So I'll just end it with, "Thank you very much," and tell Owen that we missed him, and we'll be in touch.
Hope his wife is doing good.
Yeah. Did you hear that? He said, "Best wishes for his wife and her surgery," so... Okay, we're all set. We're adjourned.